All right, it is six thirty on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. Happy birthday to my fourteen year olds. It was yesterday, but.
All right, it's my mom's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during our meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when we do disagree with it. We value the participation of our community. We want everyone, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and everyone who participates to commit to these standards, to support and respect our community. Do we have a vote to be amended? Do I have a motion for September? It's canceled September. Sorry. Mr. Kimmerman, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Right. We are going to start right off the bat with our Commission on Disabilities. I think it's summer on one of the best run committees doing amazing work.
Athena is also joining you.
Oh, wonderful.
I'm sorry, see Athena, I'm sorry.
I don't really. She did. Athena, you should be able to unmute yourself and put your camera on wherever you're ready. There she is.
Right.
Well, thanks. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to address the Select Board today. I wanted to memorize this, but there were too many accolades to do that. So I'm going to just read this brief celebration of a wonderful member of our community that helps us out rigorously and present our very first ever Champion of Inclusion Award. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Citrus Commission on Disabilities. As many of you know, the Commission is made up of dedicated volunteers appointed by the Select Board, all working toward a common goal, making Citrus one of the most accessible towns in the Commonwealth. While we are fortunate to have committed groups of Commission members, our work would not be possible without the incredible support of individuals in our community who go above and beyond to champion inclusion and accessibility. It's for that reason that we created the Champion of Inclusion and Accessibility Award to honor those whose actions truly make a difference. Tonight, we are thrilled to present this award for the very first time. When it came time to select a recipient, the decision was unanimous and enthusiastic. This individual has been an unwavering supporter of our work. She constantly makes herself available to answer any questions, offer guidance, and help us navigate the complex layers of government. She is a wonderful steward of fiscal responsibility, always helping us find the most cost-effective ways to reach our goals. Her efficiency, effectiveness, and practical wisdom have been essential to our progress. Simply put, we couldn't do what we do as a Commission without what she does as a finance director. The Champion of Inclusion and Accessibility Award recognizes individuals, groups, or organizations who go well beyond their everyday roles to create a more inclusive, accessible, and empowered Citrus. The recipient exemplifies a deep and sustained commitment to equity and inclusion, inspires other people to get involved, and has left a meaningful impact on the lives of people with disabilities in our community. On behalf of the Commission, it is our great honor to present the very first Champion of Inclusion and Accessibility Award to Nancy.
Sweetie, Athena.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you forever. Our lives so even express how grateful we are.
They do all the work, and I get a fact.
Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me the time.
Please, what's up? Hello, Anna.
Enjoy.
You have surprise, maybe you have surprises to, you know. I had to tell them all. You ain't seen this one. I was surprised. I'm like, what's that all about? Like, I can't tell. Wonderful. All right. Well deserved. We are now going to turn over to our board for resolution.
Be pleased to read this into the record.
Yes, please. Very important.
Town of Citrus Select Board's Resolution. Whereas we are gathered this evening to recognize and honor the sixtieth anniversary of Maria's Pizza and Subs forty seventh front street. Whereas Maria's is family-owned and operated since nineteen sixty-five by Jim, Paula, and Jay, and have been serving unforgettable subbed pizza, family tradition, and proudly skipping lettuce for six decades. Whereas we are grateful for the memories, the meals, and the magic that happens behind the counter. Whereas Maria's is and will continue to be a cornerstone of Citrus Harbor, proudly slicing, stacking, and boldly saying no thanks to lettuce. Whereas it is with gratitude for Maria's support of the community over the years, therefore be resolved that we congratulate Maria's Pizza and Subs on its sixtieth anniversary and further that Maria's Subs accepts this resolution with the resounding thanks and appreciation of the Select Board and the entire town of Citrus. Your ongoing dedication to Citrus for the past sixty years has contributed to the betterment of our community for generations. Signed this twenty-ninth day of April two thousand twenty-five, attested by Kathleen A. Gardner, Town Clerk, and the complete signatures of the entire board.
Excellent. I know. That would like to order a pizza. I'll go pick it up. Very good. Excellent. Is the planning board also going to change the less resented zoning? All right. Do we have any walk-ins today? Or zoom-ins?
It's a good retreat, no zoom-ins.
All right, then we move to the report of the town administration.
Evening. Let's start with some positive news tonight. I'm pleased to announce that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has determined that the Town of Citrus is in compliance with the MBTA Community Law. The town passed a zoning requirement for compliance at the annual town meeting last year. With this determination, we are eligible for the various grant programs that we can rely on, particularly DM and Seawall and Seaport of Gama Council. So that's a good thing. Thank you to the Planning Board, Town Planner Karen Joseph, and of course the Select Board for all your hard work and so on the baseline. So we will now be applying for those grants, if they do do MBTA grant that they have from our Citrus business district. So start with some good news tonight. Well, we'll keep with the good news. The water treatment plant stays on time at this point. Big change this week is the Masons are on site doing Mason work, south side of your building, which is on the left as you look at the building. The next big milestone, probably mid-May, we'll start seeing structural steel go up. So we are scheduling the engineer to come back right around that time. I think that's kind of a big landmark change. They'll be coming in probably in the next two weeks. The next meeting or the meeting after to do another water treatment. But we may on schedule for the water. Town election Saturday, eight thirty first, eight AM to six PM, Citrus High School Gym. Ballot has gone out to be printed this night, so that's all done. Town Clerk's office should be receiving the absentee vote by mail ballots by May seventh. There's a narrow window to mail a ballot and get it back to the Town Clerk's office before the polls close at six PM on May thirty first. Please recustom mailing ballot now if you want. If possible, it is recommended that you drop your ballot off in the drop box in the town hall instead of mailing it to ensure that it's received back to the town hall on time. Voters who are not able to make it to the polls on Election Day due to travel, work, illness, may vote an absentee ballot in person at the Town Clerk's office once the ballots arrive up until noon on Friday, May thirtieth. Candidates on the ballot, ballot questions, vote by mail forms, and additional election information is on the town website. Click the red banner at the top of the homepage will take you to the Town Clerk's page. This Saturday is Shipshape Day. Save the date. Join your friends and neighbors and help clean our community for spring. Flies available at the town hall on Saturday, May third, from eight AM to one PM. You can clean up anytime on Saturday and Sunday. Leave the bags at the edge of the street or parking lot. Town Clerk's will pick up the trash during the week. Once you are done on Saturday with Shipshape Day, you can get to Green Bush. Saturday is Get to Green Bush Day. There's an annual event of funner festivities at Green Bush with the new addition of the outdoor music venue this year. So once you finish the Shipshape Day, reboard yourself and hurry up and get to Green Bush and join the festivities down there. The Recreation Department has announced a tennis and pickleball court restoration project at the Recreation Department behind the old gates will begin next week, Monday, May fifth, weather depending. Contract that has openings in their schedule, so they're going to come in early and get it done so we don't get bios for bad weather. All five courts will be prepared to resurface. Two courts closer to the Recreation Department building will be converted into four standalone pickleball courts, and the other three will remain as tennis courts. This port will take one to two weeks, again depending upon the weather. Then those courts will open back up. When that is done, probably the end of this month, we'll be looking to have the contract to come back and finish the high school courts. Those are all done, they're planned, and those will need to put down final coatings. Water departments continue flushing operations in town. They still unable to countryway towards Gannett, working on side streets off of Addleley. Please be aware of brown water, keep an eye for discoloration. If you do see it, flush the outside tap before you use your water from the house. If you have any questions, call the Water Department, seven one five four five eight seven three five. If you've driven down Route three A into Cohasset, you'll see the barrels. The Mass Labor Department has started work on the improvements to the Route three A corridor from Henry Turner Bailey Road to Beechwood Street in Cohasset. The improvements consist of signalizing the intersection of three A and Henry Turner Bailey, adding a set of turn lane from the Citrus Town Line to Beechwood Street, and bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. Work hours on Monday through Friday from seven to three thirty PM. Periodic lane closures and restrictions are expected throughout the project. Project timeline to completion is two years. If you're interested, contact Mass D O T District five, five oh eight, eight two four six six three three. Contract beginning work with Jericho Boat Rant today. The state project being done by the Mass Department of Fish and Games, Office of Fish and Watering Access, not being done by the town. Placing the catch station, doing paving work, making repairs to prevent some repairs to the actual rant itself, installing the light. I went down to see the contractor there, the job superintendent was not there, so we're going to track him down tomorrow. We do want to have discussions about whether or not we can have the boat ramped over periodically. Chippy on the weekends if the workers not going to interfere. So hopefully we'll get him tomorrow, be able to make some sort of announcement. We'll be open this weekend. The bowling is over. At the same time with the boat ramp, we're trying to get boats in. The town master has announced that spring boating has begun. Bidget slips and moorings are available from April fifth to May fourteenth. Reservations we made at Docwa, docwa.com. Fifty cents a foot per vessel a day plus electricity. About six or seven boats already in, so when you get your boat in, get your boat in, you can put it down the ramp. The gas company started work on Jericho Road. This week they're doing borings. You expect to stop putting the gas line even tomorrow, Thursday. Another one hour we have to the lighthouse, and that's going to take probably about two months. Friends of the Citrus Library invite you to participate in the fourth annual Library Art Auction from May seventh to the seventeenth. The artwork is available for viewing at the Citrus Library's art gallery on the auction's website, thirtytwoauctions.com backslash Citrus twenty twenty five. The unfortunate have twenty-seven local artists who generously donated their work, which includes watercolors, oils, acrylics, mixed media paintings. Leave the artist at a wine and cheap reception at the Library's art gallery on Friday, May ninth, from seven thirty, five thirty to seven PM. Our proceeds from the silent auction fund the free family-friendly outdoor summer concert series. So that didn't last fast. To be held at the Citrus Library each Wednesday evening in July. Enjoy the beautiful artwork and support your local library. Finally, this is National Bike Awareness Month. Citrus Bike Committee and the Rec Department have a bike bingo card for some fun biking activities during the month available for the Rec Department. We want to remind motors of the law in Massachusetts requiring passing distance between any vehicle and a bike or a pedestrian to be four feet and at a safe passing speed. Signs have been posted in various possible towns. What this means, if you have a narrow road and there's oncoming traffic, you have to wait for the lookout to go by, although if you pass a bike or a pedestrian and give sufficient distance. Please check out the activity card at the Recreation Department. We have questions for any bike.
Great. Question.
Jim, just remind me, mine and her, come on. Is that on the schedule or what's up with?
No, that is behind schedule because they had to do additional permitting at the Conservation Commission, so we weren't able to get it out the bid and it may not be done in time. So that will now be a fall project.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, two things. Is the work on the Henry Turner Bailey intersection of Beechwood, is Henry Turner Bailey intersection supposed to help with the problems that we have at Booth Hill and then Manlot? Is there theory there?
I don't know if they'll help at Manlot. They should definitely help at Booth Hill. You'll have a break with cars coming south with the light and then cars coming down the hill. The theory is they'll start slowing down when they see the traffic light. So it should cause a break in traffic that will help at Booth Hill. Don't think of Manlot. Manlot's probably too far where the cars will be getting out of speed. But Booth Hill, definitely so. When we're looking at signal improvements and intersection improvements in terms of signalization, State always talks about roundabouts, we'd really be looking at Manlot now because Booth Hill will be too close to do another signal. So lots of conversations we haven't dealt about looking at Manlot. They're going to go supply engineer.
Right. And then one other thing, and I'm not going to be scold everyone, but it's yard sign time. And I have noticed a lot of signs are not on people's property. They're on public property, and they're not supposed to be. And so I would just suggest to all the candidates that if you're going to put your signs on public property, somebody is going to take them down, I assume. And it just seems to me as though, also, I've been hearing people say that people are putting signs on their property without asking them. Now, I'm only going to suggest that it's only courtesy to ask the homeowner if you can put a sign on their property. So I understand the urge for the signs up, they're done, and I understand that people are enthusiastic, but it's just, you know, we need to pay attention to the local sphere folks, right? So sorry if you just scold me, but.
I do have one question. The beach fine proposal that passed the town meeting, what's the next steps for that? Because we have to then send it to the state, right?
I believe we already sent it, didn't we, Sherry?
Did we send it to the state?
We sent it to.
We sent the legislation and it was voted, yes.
So it goes to O'Connor and Kearney, and they will file it on behalf of the town. That goes through the place that passes.
Okay. It's not like that will not be signed up tomorrow.
Even once that passes, then this board will have to have a meeting to actually set the fine.
Set the, right, because it was a not to exceed.
Right, it's not to exceed, and you can decide where you want that fine to actually be.
Can I jump in on that? Sure. It has been noted, and I've noted it myself for a couple of years, there are signs at Peggy Beach that say parking allowed above a sticker of the four spaces down. Now, I understand there's a reason for it. Maybe Jim can explain to people why that would be the case. It's not the case at any of the other features that I know of. But if you do see a sign at Peggy Beach that says these spaces are available for people and then a sticker.
As mine said, that years ago, the town took money from FEMA to make some improvements to that parking lot as part of taking federal money. There has to be a public benefit. A public benefit is parking spaces that are available under state.
So if anyone's got any questions about that, folks, that's why that is there.
Good.
Well, once upon a time, there were two parking spaces, and they covered with rocks. And so finally, it must have been cleaned up. So, but Jim's absolutely right. We go back to back in the day. Ambermine Penfistrow.
Those fill up first thing in the morning. People go out and fight, they got it, and then leave and come back.
Oh, sure, they do. It's just, it's an oddity, and someone knows the day after we raise the coins.
That's the reason.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm just attached to what Mr. Monroe said about the MBTA Communities Act. The Planning Board and department heads worked for a year on getting that through. And also to, in a very short period of time, the town planner, town council, chair of the planning board, that proved the importance so long for eighty years. So kudos to the planning board, the planner, chair, parking heads. That zone was tough, tough. It really was hard, and it is truly appreciated for the amount of time that it's been in charge. And thank you all for what you have done. We appreciate it. Well, thank you, man. It's fun to bring that up as the ladies want to the planning board. I was going to mention it, our days on the fourth, but nobody's awaited that hour. So I will say that on behalf of the board, we certainly appreciate the work of the planning board. They have been working more than over twice the past year. They have things thrown at them that they simply had to put their shoulders to the wheel and do it, and they've done it really well. It's been very professional. I've seen zoning articles go down the flames. And frankly, zoning articles going down the flames and pounds around us because, you know, I'm not saying their planning boards didn't do the work, but it's a lot of work and there's, I know that the whole board feels that the planning board and the town planner have done an excellent job. We certainly appreciate that.
It's limited time, Jim. That's the most reason that you.
Yeah, deadlines, deadlines, deadlines. And you know what? We're volunteers. Yes, we are volunteers. Yes. I mean, there are those that get paid big bucks or whatever. No, I'm like you guys. Yeah. Five hundred dollars a year going. I'm one. It's going. It's me doing the best we can. Well, it's. Appreciate it. So thank you. Thank you.
Great. So you're good. We will go to our first scheduled item, special events. We have Janet Gibson here for the Hearts in Motion Walk. Argue. Cannot wait to hear about the war.
Ready?
So ready. It seems so like stolen that whole. Anyway, sorry. Get into it.
First of all, it's so nice to finally be in front of you in the hall of a community person rather than just sending you applications in and whatever. But I'm Janet Gibson, and I'm the founder and president of our house in the month. And what I'm before you forth is for a permit for Hearts in Motion Walk. The month of May, side to the east of the month, which you said or whatever. It is also Mental Health Awareness Month. And there is another organization in Marshville called JPH, very popular, but not good. But they purchased the old LWCA that was in Marshville up behind the Bridgeway neighborhood. And they are nonprofit in a beautiful center for wellness and a lot of mental health wellness programs, support systems. So it's a great organization, and they approached us to collaborate with them because we both have similar healing missions and to just represent Mental Health Awareness Month. So our intention is to start a walk, to represent light into darkness and sunset on Hamar Beach in front of Allison House. And then we will walk on the beach. And so the only part that involves Citrus is just from beach entrance to crossing over the bridge. And then we will just walk up through sidewalks and up the street neighborhoods behind the Bridgeway. It's about a mile and a half walk. People will have lanterns, there's neon lit fire, anything can be lit, fire. And we will have quotes and statistics about mental health and human quotes and music, and Erica Sors from Citrus, who's a social worker, she's going to be part of this as well. So it's the first time we're doing this. It's really not so much a fundraiser as more of an awareness of here and this local community. We have two incredible organizations that support wellness and body mind sphere. So that is our whole purpose for our events. We really look forward to it. And if one of you tap it off at a hundred people, we have no idea that show up. And people need to like register for it to free. But that's a mission for it. And I'm happy to answer any questions by us as well when I'm here.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's some, I mean, folks that know about it, it's definitely, it works beautiful. Move on the website. It's amazing. Especially given the history and our back. Questions, comments, and I'll. Pretty simple.
Thank you.
A commendable effort. You know, I wish you all the well.
Well, thank you.
I hope you did great success. And you're about to make the next year as well.
Thank you, and I'll leave you this year.
Yeah, well, I think it's a great event. I did want to make sure people know it is Thursday. They're requesting beach parking, and it is a Thursday evening, so that it would typically be us this.
What day?
Yeah, it's May.
May twenty nine. It's not only maybe we did, because that's earlier.
Yeah, the people have, yeah.
It's the weekend after, or the Thursday after.
Questions? Well, then.
Just, have you been on Citrus Community TV about this at all?
No.
You should probably talk to Seth Viper.
Okay.
He's our, you know, he's somewhere out there. There he is.
There he is.
It just sounds like a nice story to be able to tell.
I'm glad.
You know, I'm not saying you really try to promote people coming to the event, because I'm sure you don't want to be overwhelmed, but for people to talk.
I agree with you.
For people to understand what the story is, I think, is really important. So Seth is a really good storyteller.
Thank you. I'll leave that.
There's one thing I think you spoke about that Citrus is not involved that much, but we are with our support and to make sure that folks are there. So yeah, maybe a small part of the walk, but just know that the community is there to understand the mission. Also, we have a new friend over here that's Christian from WETV as well. You're a new friend. We could talk to him, too. I know he's loved this challenge. Yeah, it's a motion.
Move to approve a special event, Hearts in Motion, on Thursday, May twenty ninth, five to six thirty, nine thirty, noon, pending all Department approvals.
Okay.
Can't go say that. It's coming in all favor.
Aye.
Unanimous. We want to walk.
I appreciate it. We welcome anything you do. Join us.
Thank you. All right. Next, wind turbine agreements.
So Sherry set out an explanation, and I think we'll have to high carpet. At the time, I took a fifteen-year agreement for Citrus Wind, began on May fourth, two thousand. We purchased the power. We get net metering credits back that converted into funds for us. Those funds go into the wind turbine account, and then lately we've been using those funds to cover the cost of the chappelle at night. The contract allows us to negotiate a five-year or two-five-year power purchase agreements to extend that power purchase with Citrus Wind. If we do that, if we do five years, it'll be second five year that we'll have to deal with. If we do ten years, we'll lock in a little bit better. And also there is the possibility that Citrus Wind will re-power the turbine. The turbine elements will be cleaner, whiter, more efficient. However, some people call and say, well, don't extend the power purchase agreement. Then the windmill shuts down. That's not the case. The lease states that town is not interested in extending the power purchase agreement. Then we must notify Citrus Wind, and then they can sell the power elsewhere and extend the lease by two, five, five-year terms automatically. So really, the discussion for the board is, do you wish to purchase the power continually to get the credits and use the funds through the credits to cover the cost of the turbine curtailment at night? Or let those, the power be sold on the open market, we no longer get the credits. Then when the wind turbine account is empty, we either have to pay the cost of the curtailment out of appropriated funds or no longer do the curtailment. So it's not about shutting down the windmill. The other option that the town has that I would not recommend is purchasing the turbine. Right now, that'd be in the three to four million dollar range of purchasing. So I think that's as simple as I can make it.
And I guess to be clear, I had a lot of questions about this. And again, I mean, this is the lease contract that none of us are on board when all this happened. But really, as part of the big question is, if we don't renew. the other option is, they have full complete power to go somewhere else, someone else can purchase. And then the curtailment is, becomes an issue. Where if we continue, we can stay status quo with the curtailment and still have economic benefit, but also have the curtailment hours.
We would build that into the agreement going forward, so we wouldn't have to take it up every year or two years or three, and it would be built into the agreement for the five or ten year period.
I know where I wanna go with it. I think we can do the ten years. It makes sense, financially correct. And we've already done some of all the ups and downs on it.
Now?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I certainly don't wanna see anyone else have the ability to negate the curtailment agreement that we have. It's so painful to get there. So, I'd like to think that it's working as well as it can in the way it is. And that, you know, we can continue to get money for, get money for when we're not curtailed. And that your willingness, town, to pay for the curtailment, is the best of chances. So, I agree. I think you see the value.
I think the most important part of this extension in doing a tenure is giving the operator the muscle to go and finance upgrades. Because, you know, we know the technology's improved greatly since those were installed. And this gives them that operation now. They're not obligated to do this under this agreement.
No. For the five-year agreement, they will not do it, credit don't have to consider.
It's too short between the amount and all of that. So, I think giving them that opportunity and retain, and to stay, to give them the curtailment is a long plot or agreement in the other, in the benefit of the revenue and power that we do receive. I would not want to go to another agency and afford it, but so, yeah. This is the best I've seen.
No.
Who wants it?
Yeah, again, also, who would want to buy it?
I don't think that we have any sales to the town.
And I'll say my, I mean, my, before I stand to, I'm with you, we do ten. I wanna protect the residents that are around here, make sure the noise is. And by doing this, we're guaranteeing that it might be shut off at those hours. It works as well as it would be with someone else who knows what can happen. So, a little bit back in the corner with how the news is, but I'd rather guarantee a decade of quiet nights.
Well, it's on May. No one else could do what we did.
No.
No one else. No public entity would do it, put a pound in to make this better for the rest of us. So, I don't know why we in any way want to try to even risk putting someone else in danger.
I'll open it up to the public. I don't know if they... Please, yes, I.
Hello, this is Carol, we're in twenty-six, Houston. On behalf of the president, someone, they're bluffing the area. I do appreciate the fact that you would go with the non-control, um, control. Sorry. It really is beneficial to get a good night's sleep. Many of us have been up there for thirty years, longer than the turbine has been there. So, it was a rude awakening having it all of a sudden running all night long and being awake from, you know, eleven to six in the morning or listening to it when there really was not wind to be powering it, and yet it's pushed through making horrific noises in the middle of the night. So, I, this Dean is not here too now, but isn't that nice? But if I can just say, you know, I don't think that it has not done the time change. So, it's really shut off from midnight to seven. I mean, I'm sleeping through those kind of hours in a funk of where it starts at seven. But I know that there's some other neighbors that have not been happy with that kind of thing. The other thing is, I don't know, I live the tour, you know, twenty-four, seven, three, six, to five. The wind blows over forty mile an hour and, I'm sure Mr. Dean probably doesn't know this either, but with it shuts down, and it can be three or four days before it's re-powered up again. So, to me, there's a lot of money being wasted there, you know, let alone shutting it down for us residents at night, which is a good thing. And thank you for doing that. But, I mean, it kind of eats at me, too, that it can sit for days, days and days when there is good breeze and stuff like that, but it's dry, punctual. So, but thank you for choosing a good offer for us residents.
I appreciate that. And, yeah, and like anything other, anything else, part of that is, yeah, there's gonna, I guarantee you, and I've had a few emails about certain hours, if it's daylight savings or whatever. But this now gives us the power to go back to and say, hey, this is what we agreed to. Here we are, okay. And this is a twenty-four, seven. It's like, when we did a water treatment plant and turned that on, that should stay on for seventy years. You know, it's unbelievable. So, at least we have that power, and that's what I'm hoping for. And it's, it will not improve. And then, okay, it's gonna, something's gonna go, who knows, uh, losing the ability to kind of do our best.
And I get emails usually around the time change.
Yeah.
And I send them off to Gordon. He usually takes care of it very good for me.
Yeah.
So, I don't think he's on here. That's the bad, I think he's just on here to listen. They're usually pretty good when we send them emails, say, hey, there's some time change.
See you there. We will, I'll take a motion.
Move that the select board renew the power purchase agreement and release for a period of ten years effective May fourth, twenty twenty-seven.
Still more second?
Second.
Can't feel all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Decade of quiet.
Ten more years.
I plan on going to have a few more.
Are we in a town soul benefits? It's like, it's up my way.
I'm gonna get my thing here.
Thank you. And Gordon, thank you. Is on there. Mr. Cafferty?
Hold on.
This is my, this is the happy day.
It's always a happy day.
This is for a bunch of you having, too. This is for SUII. This is great, for Suer itself. Yes, it's all helps, neural system, I love it. Let's talk about the town first.
So, we put an I and I contract out with you, we did last meeting. We have since gave the contract a notice to proceed. Part of the contract is, we have an engineering firm providing people overseeing the work as well as reviewing all the videotaping and the work that's done, to make sure it's completed. Specialized work. And the next phase of that is to add them, or one demo contract to oversee the contractor as they are. How we oversee this, as well as do some of the project management for our project.
And this is, I'm gonna look at the map again.
So, the map, unfortunately, it's area of two, one, and one-one. And those are the areas that they're gonna be focused on. And those were designated from the original rider study that we had done. And we'd already had some of the other areas along the coast that were more shaped. So, just as a matter of fact, how things are going. Right now, our current rolling average is one point one-nine. We are at seventy-four point four percentage capacity. Last year, at this time, we were one point four seven seven. So, but there's a lot of factors in that. That doesn't mean we put that all out. We're also technically still in drought stages. So, but, you know, we are feeling some improvements. We've identified ten locations where we have what we call gushers. We're going to have contractors out there digging that pipe up and replacing that section in the future. Hopefully, that'll make a big difference, so.
Well, it's pretty rainy April. I don't have, it's still a drought, but it's still there.
Technically below average. Not, it seemed like it rained every day, but still not.
Still below. And this map looks like an eye test. Yeah.
Yeah, I can't read.
Give us like a general.
Where does it go across the street?
Yeah, kind of.
That's where.
Right, it's in third cliff. It comes all the way up.
Marina, Marina. So, that's like the church right here.
Right, yeah.
So, it's okay.
I mean, that's how I would look at it. You know, that goes over across, you know, to Peggy Beach. And then you go this way, it's like, oh.
That's great, man. It also helps with the marsh area over there. That's huge.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Questions? Yes.
Don't we say you're gonna be plugging some patches, are they due in the end, or?
They're outside of that.
They are.
These are areas. What we found is, when we give this to the people who do the I and I, the contractor, they just type a contractor and then put a mark out on top of it. So, we're kind of a, like, I'm just a contractor ourselves, just doing it on the contract. We go, some of them can be pretty deep. They can be quite fourteen feet deep, so.
Great. Yay.
Yep. Oh, good.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Makes sense. All right, we'll... You do all the time now. Do you do a motion, or do them all at once, or?
Sure. Move to approve the amendment November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, phase two contract for Suer I and I investigation and approvals. Contract twenty-three dash SS dash seventy-two, for a amount not to exceed three hundred and eleven, that hundred thousand dollars, six hundred lots. So, that was our compensation for providing services described in the April seventh, twenty twenty-five amendment number two, construction phase services. Is that good?
Very succinct. Move, just bounce over this. Can't feel all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Right. All right. All right. Something about the Chevy T.
Yeah, this is to replace that twenty fifteen. Fifteen, how old? Which is being used by the deputy chief right now. And then you will move the twenty-two, twenty twenty, deputy chief. Twenty fifteen will come up. Our backup reserve vehicle, which is used daily by the mechanic, taking parts or...
Taking parts, right.
They just, yeah, just daily. Daily missions and some, some, some comedy support and some other teams we support. So, it actually stays as a responsive vehicle as well, for as long as it lasts.
But we buried the lead, though. We approved, we approved eighty, and this is seventy?
Yeah, yeah. And then, and then, yeah. And another stroke, like, on Marshfield, it is also ordered vehicles. And we added rear console to it, prevent shipping them the wrong, they ship paddles instead of, they use explorers. And the weight of these things, it's not worth shipping them back, so he's offered to us the half price or something like that.
Wow, yeah.
So, we're, yeah.
Good deal.
Probably gonna come in anyway.
No, it's gonna be twelve thousand, very high. Beautiful.
Yes. Yeah, so we moved fast, we moved fast, yeah, before the tariffs.
I would hope our...
And they have parts now.
And they have parts they can get.
Don't have Teras on you.
Love it. Questions? This is all we have. Make sense to me? All right, motion.
Move to award a contract to the municipal group in the amount of seventy thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty cents for a twenty twenty-five Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel drive V sixty.
Can't go say that by?
Second.
Seriously? All favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Forget I look like Ian. I was just gonna say.
Turf products.
On behalf of Ian, I have a contract for you. He did even better. The town meeting appropriation was two hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. And his pro came in at two hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. We're the quarter runner. And this is for a new grounds master, a new greens master, and a new workman HDX, which I don't know what abouts. And a multi-pro geo light, which is a sprayer. So, as we brought the maintenance in-house, these are the pieces of equipment that needed to be replaced. I believe he told me the lead time on maybe on weeks, probably nine to twelve months.
I don't know.
Yeah. That's why we had, he had to have an emergency reserve transferred with the advisory committee approved last month to repair his sprayer, because the new one won't come in in time.
All right. So, you have the whole list. Yeah, there's a ton of the different ones. Work lights, work this. Geo light, green smell, tons of different things. That's great, that is able to come. Good budget. Questions?
Well, we, uh, we want to, but this is a contract, so the prices will be, won't be adjusted back. It's nine, one, seven. Can we go with the quarter in a jar? Will we appropriate that for something else later?
We'll see if it'll work.
Questions? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. That's all right. We've got a pre-lease. No problem. So, I'm assuming that this is still working out for us financially, that it was much better for us to take this in the council, was to, you know, have the contract that the other side done, that we passed upon time. So, even though I'm very pleased with the shape of the golf course, and I think that's been required in its relevance as well. And financially, it's still a good deal for us to have done this.
Basically, a lot.
That's great. Good. Thank you.
Not done an inspection yet this year. To make sure.
Too keen.
Yes. Motion.
Move boat to award a contract to turf products in the amount of two hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents for a new ground master, green, greens master, sprayer, and workman utility V eight roll.
So, you're much better.
Seven.
Tom, now, in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Sitting right along.
It was not great for coffee.
Correct, coffee breaks.
Jim, how's our workers' comp? We can't, can we pay those bills?
He just seeing it flash in front of his eyes.
Just seeing a pile of crashing into her slack.
Move to violation, right? The goal I'm getting. Over the worst. All right, we now on to the Citywood Food pantry. We have...
First, it's here, the lease expires. So, what's for you is a one-year extension with two options on it. No changes to any of the visions in the lease. They've been great. I think they're very happy here.
We're very happy.
So, and we know that the next thing we're talking about is a reuse, but that's gonna take quite a while, so. I think they'll decently get to the end of this three events. In the meantime, we'll start off and look where they can go.
I have no, I think it's great. Keep it going.
Great.
Well, I don't have a question but an observation that we are not forgetting about food pantry. I really think that, I was approached by a number of people at town meetings. I've been approached before and after, but I keep hearing about it. Nobody's forgetting about food pantry. We understand the challenges they have. It's, they have certain needs that, you know, need to be met. But I'm absolutely a hundred percent certain that I'll support a new place once that needs to be done. And if it needs to be done as part of the Gates School conversion, who knows? But nobody's forgetting about it.
Our cushions.
Our cushion, our cushions.
Our cushions still there.
They're opportunities, but it's too important to the town to have this... This charity, this nonprofit, this, you know, it's exceeding important, so.
Well, it's, it's important for the town, it's important for the community, and it's needed because just this month, we, in the month of March, we... just this month, we, uh, in the month of March, we added thirteen new clients. We serviced between on Tuesday and Thursday, they come on to week, we'll serve fifty to fifty-five cars, families will come up. We also delivered seventeen home clients that we, and whether seventeen or so, the next time we cover it, they're two weeks. We have forty-nine people signed up on home delivery that we delivered to through volunteers. So we're a growing business and we don't want to be, but we are.
Well, we don't actually be growing business either, but, but, you know, there is a need, there will probably always be a need, but, you know.
Well, especially with the Great Boston Food Bank, you read about what's going on with them, the kind of finances, the aid programs that they're getting and they're already telling us and we're not getting when we go in, what we order, because they just don't have. And we expect that, so more of our stuff is gonna come from the nation to shop, stop the shop, and the residents who don't, you know, still buy them.
Well, I think on behalf of the board that we all appreciate all the volunteers, especially that we're here doing the hard work. It's hard physical work down there, folks.
Yes.
I know someone who works there and he's, he's very hard.
He works very hard.
He works very hard, he gets to the top of the mayor, folks. That's a big deal, folks. So, he's usually in the base. So, and anyway, but, you know, as I say, we all appreciate what we do.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion or, uh, thoughts, concerns, are we, uh, been happy with this?
Yes.
No, that should be enough.
Are you thinking about?
I have, I have been thinking about it, but, uh.
Just care of shit. You need to come up with a vote, do you?
Yeah, I don't know if we could do that now, I guess we're doing this on the fly, but. Or a day, not a.
Say that, out lower than right.
No.
Oh.
Did you, can't do that? What? The hundred dollars?
A month.
Which, why are you doing that, why, why, why are you helping them? The hundred dollars and you're borrowing the hundred dollars? All the new clients and all the extra cost, that's why I was doing, doing it all.
Why?
I, I commend the thought and it's definitely a huge, you know, needed resource.
I gotta better again. I gotta better again.
Okay, that's a better.
We'll do it. I'll talk to you about it. I gotta better again.
Well, that's. He's gonna need a vote.
No, there's something, something private.
I can go. Yeah, our, unfortunately, as a, our on the.
Cause we got, I know, cause we got paid for the, uh, trust, that's why.
On the fly.
Okay. I mentioned, uh, recommendations.
Kind of break, it's a break even number.
Right, that's why.
As my understanding, the number is how we break even, it's not a money-making opportunity for us.
No.
By any stretch.
Right, no.
Thanks.
Okay.
Uh, we, I, I would move to grant an extension to the visiting, like if you, you're trying to get to it in situat food pantry for one year, here, commencing April second, twenty twenty-five, um, through April first, twenty twenty-six, ninety, nine hundred dollars per month, or portion of property located at three twenty-seven, first parish.
Move, I'm just, scandal second to five? It's Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
I am unanimous.
Thank you.
Big boost.
Thank you.
Next, seven forty, next steps of the old gates.
Speaking of.
Speaking of the old gate school, I mean, I'll kick this up a little bit, Nancy and Jim, you can talk about it, but there's, there are folks with a lot of moving parts for this, and this is not what happened at town meeting, does not mean it's a done deal. It's not a done deal. There's traveling, bargaining, we have to deal with the, the fields, food pantry, obviously, which we just talked about, um, but we need to spoken, so we want to make an honest effort and a, and a great effort with integrity, and we need folks of integrity to help us, so we're not gonna build on this alone, because there are so many different a lot of moving parts to this, uh, to see if this is still a viable option to bring, uh, housing to that. Right, so we wanna kick that off, that this is not, I'm not doing it to scare anyone, but to also say, hey, we understand that there's tons, we have tons of meetings to go through, lots of studies to look at, but we make a, an effort, we move forward. So, Nancy, Jim?
Yeah, I mean, this is really just the next step, um, we now have permission to lease or sell, it would be a lease most likely, because we have a hot type carving up, probably a stop. So now the option is, do you wanna go forward with the random group, which case, the answer is yes. We will have a random group at town council, draw up a development agreement, we come back to the board, that will spell out how this process will go forward. And then it goes on the process. Still have planning board, conservation, zoning board, appeal, everybody that, uh, that we isn't undeveloped or that boy, that what they haven't had, but they have, there's been a lot of talk of traffic, anything we do up there, short of just tearing the building down and leaving the load in space, town hall, recreation, housing, we are gonna have to deal with that intersection of traffic. I think that was part of the condition of the planning board when they did senior side, if we were gonna do anything else up there, we were gonna have to deal with that traffic, so. That's something that is gonna stare us in the face, no matter what we do there, short of just again, tearing the building down and putting load in space, so. So, next time, what, about what we need?
Well, I have to say, I mean, I think you've had great experience with this developer and the town has reviewed this plan. My, uh, my biggest concern is we only had one developer interested. And, um, I think that, I mean, I think the RP was appropriate, it went out, with everything, all the boxes were checked. Um, but I'm a little, um, I, I'm a little hesitant to say, yeah, yeah, let's run with them without, um, exploring a few more inquiries on who might possibly be interested, I know you may be, but we have it was another, uh, group that was interested and they decided to not offer proposal because they said the numbers didn't make sense for them. So we expected another proposal and this group did one in Brockton, working everyone in Brockton was very excited. They said in the end, it just didn't make any more sense for them.
Wait, how can, we couldn't open another RP without both of them?
No, 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 no.
And I think that's like this, I don't think that.
We already have good experience with random group and the architect. From Los Green.
So let's talk about the context a little bit, so we say, okay, and I don't disagree, I think, I'm not at all a, uh, you know, pushback on the then as a developer. How would we, as a board, because there's so many, there's gonna be parts on that, but how would we, in the next steps, ensure that we have the oversight and input that we need, um, from all the stakeholders? How would we, how would we, I mean, we could, we, if we do this proposal and say, let's enter, start talking in agreement, whatever, I would hope that that agreement would spell some of that out, are we gonna go through PDC, are we gonna have them, you know?
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go through PDC because it wouldn't be a town construction.
No, right, is it affordable, housing, first can be, like, how are we gonna make sure?
It would be, it would be involved, who would actually oversee when it's getting built? Is that the last thing, or who would?
What I'm concerned about is that this is a very sensitive site, and there are a lot of stakeholders. And we got the, you know, we got town meeting says, okay, this is a good use for the site, but I don't want anyone to have even a concern that we're not considering the impact on all of uses of that site while we do this process.
Long drawn answer is, it has to go through, it would be a, a lit project, local initial petition forty B. So ultimately be the zoning board of appeals that hears that, with the planning board has hearings on it, waves in. I, I don't believe conservation is gonna have anything, but, uh, it's evident, there's only board of appeals, public hearings. We have our own design engineers, consulting engineers, they review everything they're doing. We have traffic engineers, we do that traffic plan, so from that point of view, there's multiple, multiple public hearings, so people will have an opportunity. The board could also add their own public hearings, uh, public meetings, I guess would be a public, public meetings to get input. So it's a very, has to be a very open process, it's by the nature of it. In terms of, once it gets started, uh, ultimately would be my responsibility. Cam would bear a lot of the day-to-day keeping an eye on things, Cam, if not, will take it sure that they're not doing things that are supposed to ultimately, stay apart of it.
Are you, those suggesting more just trying to get all those different stakeholders in a different realm, kind of, of residents, and you're concerned about that? Are you thinking more like, uh, where you're thinking more something like a period of waiting for a sharp committee of some, from different to make sure they're looking at, to make sure, does rec have what they need today? Is that what you're thinking?
I'm wondering if that's required, I guess, that's, thank you for taking any way that I did, I, I think one way is we could make sure that with the engine, we could then include, um, the requirement of two public meetings that are outside of the normal review process as part of the contract, I think that's reasonable. And then I guess what I'm really wondering is, does the board think it needs that extra layer, like a sharp committee?
I think it's sure.
You know, that's just a chair, please. We're, we're really, and I, again, as I said on the floor of the town meeting, the passion for this is, is, oh. We're so far ahead, we can't make a book that the idea tonight is to get the design agreement established. Then we can add, we should be able to add some oversight, there's a lot of people in this town that wanna be, wanna have a voice. And if we can do it in a nice organized way, I think that's the way to make this a very, very successful project. Random group are the best in the, in Massachusetts for what they do, they have that reputation. So I'm comfortable with them creating a, I mean, an agreement for us to look at and review, and then we can fill any pieces in as we go, as, as it's appropriate, so.
I think the, uh, the local oversight board, if you wanna use that term, would be the formal housing trust.
Sure.
In this case, you know, shock, we didn't have any committee that fit what we wanted to do there. There is a committee, so it'll be the, the formal housing. If you didn't wanna go with this, we'd have to tell the man that we're not going forward at this point. We'd have to look at the RFP, figure out what we would change, potentially get a different result when we went back out the RFP.
The opportunities.
And then, as Jamie was just saying, you might go back out and get nothing, because I've been saying, hey, look, we think this is serious, we're not spending it, so.
It's a good opportunity. And we can do all of what we're talking about, we really can, that we need.
Yeah, I, I personally think that, um, entering into a draft agreement doesn't mean that whatever they put down on paper, that we put to it. Uh, I'm assuming there'll be some back and forth as to how we see it proceeding. And that at some point, I'm sure there's gonna be some sort of an out, if if, if it comes to an end pass somewhere.
There always is some sort of out.
Right.
Right, once you start a development agreement, that's the agreement, the developmental agreement doesn't say sixty-three units and four stories and it's just, these are the steps, we're gonna take, this is the process, this is who's involved, this is the input, this is what our responsibilities are to help move forward.
Right.
There's our, and then again, it goes through the process, right, now that's sixty-three units, it might come out of the ZBA and well, I mean, I'm taking stuff up, right? But they have to get through that whole permitting loophole, regular roll, and come up with something, so the development agreement is just, what's our responsibilities, what's their responsibility, who performs what? Get this process going and get it through to a final, but yeah, there's always that.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say too was is that you, you can't start from nowhere, you have to start from somewhere, and it's the next point where.
Right, and if the cash point won't put in, then they have to be at least two public leaves of the slide going. La, la, la.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna say, I, we had a example of a development agreement, the one that we have for long, and it's very, um, extensive, and it goes, it's a lot of things you would think of going through this development, um, I would also add the, um, traffic though too, because they didn't have as big of an issue with that. But it's like, oh, who manages what, how, how we're going to fund this, um, including the, and how the situat housing authority is, is involved and, you know, and the square footage of it will be, so I think this is the next step to start the process of developing an agreement. This is not, hey, random, give us a criminal sign, this is like, this is the back and forth with our council and making sure that everything that we heard at town meeting, which was a lot, that we heard at town meeting, how much we can negotiate with that to get, you know, what's best for the town, and so I, I fully think this is the next step of that project. And I do think it's a good proposal, whether it's gonna be sixty-three when it's all said and done, um, who knows, maybe it'll be less. Some of the comments we got back was, there's no common sense, right, like, from public comments that we heard. So I, I am fully in support of move, continuing to move the ball forward, and while we continue to do that, continue to live into the concerns of the butters and of the town as a whole.
I agree. Questions, comments from either Zoom ones or anyone from here?
Uh, Mr. Goodrich. Yes, yes.
First one on, you can go back on that.
Yeah, we'll go here and then we'll go.
You go, you go.
Yes.
Um, very legal Westgate name, um, my question is, when in the process will they, uh, figure out the expenses for moving the house back over to the other wing? When will they figure out the expense of doing the field? Because I think it was, are going to be huge numbers that have not affected any.
So, I mean, although, I think part of that is gonna be with uh, exactly, moving the field, we don't even know how much of it we have to move yet.
Again, that, that, good question, you're dealing with a detail. We're only at the development agreement. Although those details occur after the development agreement is established with the project, then starts to open up and move forward. Um, whether that field gets moved the way it is, or we can put the round on the back of it, add more parking, take away, add more parking, all those things happen, but we're only at the development agreement phase at this point. So, if, if anybody has a chance for that.
Could be possibly even have to move it, but who knows, right? Yeah, because Cam was saying, we, we have some preliminary designs for putting the A-Wing in the gym on its own power from Kevin Kelly, when we talked about what was gonna happen with that building, so Cam will be the one that will firm up those numbers and what they look like, but we
Yeah.
We have a preliminary what it would look like, that's something that he'll start kinda bang out where.
Right, yeah, kinda run away.
Because eventually, again, these are, the building's getting torn down, housing's getting put there, we're putting that out of zone heat. While the building's getting torn down, we'll put it out of zone heat.
Yeah, yeah, either way, we're putting that area on.
But good question, but
Very good.
Yeah, indulge, but let's move forward on the design agreement, because then that gets us to those levels in the next year or so, that's how long it's gonna take.
And I, I wanna follow up with that question, because it does raise an important point at this juncture, is let, okay, we, we enter an agreement, we all start the process, we start talking about, they're looking at what's viable for them. Do you know, create, do we have to give a competition, who knows, we don't know what any of this is. But my question is, so we go down the road on this, and now we're like, okay, we can do this, this and this. And, and then we, on the park, they're not gonna pay for the parking lot, or the, you know, field, most likely, they're not gonna pay for the resetting of other A-Wing, any relocation, enter that first up. At some point, we'll quantify that. Where's, where's the junction road where we say, this is really good that you can do this housing and stuff, but now we're left with a bill we can't pay. Like, we're gonna need like a, you know, a, a parachute that we need at, at some junction. Just entering into this agreement give a, give us that sort of fluidity in the process that we can, except that when we know more down the stream.
Yeah, I think what it happened, that'd be the out we talked about.
Yeah.
So again, cost of putting the A-Wing in the gym on its own heat is a cost we are having regardless of whether this project goes through.
Right.
So you really can't, you can't say this is a public project, uh, but rebuilding the intersection or cut it off. That is probably something the developer would say.
I'm not gonna.
There's no way I can afford that still. There's no way I can afford that and still build these units, right? Make them all affordable. So we would look at that and say, okay, but something like that would be definitely eligible with state money. Because it'd be necessary for the provision of all income housing. So we would look at that and say, I won't cut, we won't forward it again. But yeah, I think there has to be a whole point to say, wait a second. Right? And again, we don't know if it's gonna impact the fields, we don't know at extent it's gonna impact the fields. And then it's a town decision, okay, well, which not gonna replace them. That's up to the town at that point. Right? That it would be the only place where they can put a kid, this building down, or here. I believe that, well, we can see, we see what's for that.
Yeah, I, I, that was, I think that was a really long way to say, but it's, this gets us to get those final quotes. And there's, yeah, we could still, at some point, it'll honestly be fifty million dollars, we'll see later, it could be a million, and we might get a grant. So until we do this, those numbers don't come into play, and then they may not hold for, we may not. That's why I was trying to tee it off. It's not a done deal, because there's a lot of moving parts. But we're gonna try to.
We're just not at that phase yet.
Yeah.
No, but it's, I, but I get that, I get the folks out there, they, they thought of them past it, and it's like, well, it doesn't mean it's the done deal. We have to, this is where we do the work.
First.
Uh, yes, Ms. uh, Ms. Jennifer, you should be able to unmute, just name, address, and go ahead with your comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jennifer Kuhn, twenty, Cary Litchfield Lane. My question is, how many affordable units are we currently needing today? Are we, I'm, I heard the number two hundred. Are we currently like?
Three hundred. I have that, Jennifer, I don't have it at my fingertips, sorry, but I do have it.
Well, it's sort of moving target.
It's a couple hundred.
I was told three hundred at the meeting. There was, there was two ninety or something, I don't, I mean.
It's more than the proposal.
It is more than the proposal.
Okay, so, and, and how many units do you think we'll need in three years? I mean, will that go up another hundred? Will that go up another two hundred?
It really depends on how much housing you have. So the good thing about a rental development like this is they all count towards your affordable number. Whereas if you build condos, only twenty-five percent count towards your affordable number. You know, the big one for us would have been Butler Farms, which was a proposal for almost two hundred and seventy units. Which would have put the town right around ten percent at the time. So I know we're chasing about three hundred.
Okay. Have, has the board looked at any other options before, besides affordable housing? I think that the way that the property is set up, that it should be kept for the community. And I think having that affordable housing part on that property does not really make it accessible for all of the residents.
It's, it's not very accessible now either, um, anymore.
Right.
And so we have, we have over, I think, twelve different studies where we'd like to, we'd talk to, um, to folks over the years when we're doing those studies about other options for, you know, town hall. You can't do commercial, because that would be spot zoning, right? Because it's technically inter-residential area anyway. So you can't, can't go commercial, so you're, you're stuck, not stuck, but you're, you're forced to either go residential or town use. And besides town hall, someone's come up with another idea, and that was the discussion at town meeting.
I don't think that was the discussion at town meeting.
If I can reiterate what I said at town meeting, was exactly what you said, that if you've got, you can use municipal use, we can use residential use. If we reuse that structure, it will be fifty or sixty million dollars based on all the studies that we've done. Whatever, whatever purpose you want to use it for.
Okay.
And that was something that this board felt was hard and excessive, what we felt was, the town could afford individually on our backs. So then we said, okay, what, what can we do with a partnership? What can we find that maybe it's a private partnership or, or, or something? And we looked at the model of Lawson Green, where we provided the land and I think some of a CVC funding, or, yeah, CVC funding, to create it, make the numbers work for our partner. And that is what we chose to present at town meeting for, to A, meet a very high need in the community, and B, make sure that it is the lowest cost option for residents to reuse that state. And the third option is, we decide we can't do any of this, but we need to get money to remove that building so that the carrying costs are not to be, you know, that sort of.
Okay. It was my understanding though, at town meeting, the article was to give the for, the authority to the select board. It didn't specifically say that it was going to be for affordable housing.
It said for housing. It was the authority for the town to enter into a lease or sale for the purpose solely of housing. If it is affordable, I think it just said housing, which is housing. And that was the direction that we were given by town meeting, that yes, that's a good idea.
So it's definitely, we've committed to housing in that space by voting at town meeting.
Yeah, right. Again, if, or not, if we can't make it work, we can't make it work. I mean, that's, that, this, so again, this is our attempts to make it to work, and we're gonna do the best that we can to ensure that it works.
Good integrity agreement.
Okay.
And so we're gonna sign the agreement to go, like, that's the path we're going, to hopefully make it work.
So, so we, we did a study to say, can you put housing there? Study came back and said, yes. So we put it on an RFP that said, would anybody wanna do housing there? We got a response back that said, yes. Then we went to town meeting and said, do you wanna let us put housing there? Town meeting said, yes. So these are each of the steps that we have to take. If town meeting had said no, we're not having more conversation. If the board doesn't wanna go forward with Grantham Group, then we just, Cam goes and stops looking at the cost of putting the building on its own, tearing it down, but we don't have any other costs about fields and traffic and all that stuff. So each one's like a threshold question to get us to the next step. So to answer your question, Jennifer, we're at six point oh six percent affordable, four hundred fifty-five units, so we're chasing about three hundred.
Okay, and that's today. So the Grantham Group, if they do build this and this goes forward, it's not gonna be done for five years, so that number could double. And we're still at sixty-three units affordable.
I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't double, we're not building that much new housing, but it would double. But it would, it would go up, because we're, we are building more housing. It would be, it would be exponential, yeah. Right. And we also have additional projects, we have a project on, although a bucket that's coming online, so that'll come on against the number. Couple other ones that were on, it came off, because they were built in time. So another kind of sanctuary went off when it was permitted. Building permits were not given on the year, it came off, didn't go back on until a lot of occupancy permits were issued, so that was almost twelve years.
Okay. Well, I would like to ask the board to basically post somewhere on the website those other twelve projects that were proposed, that the board considered over the past ten years, or whatever it was. And I would also ask the board
Studies.
To start studies, whatever they were, I'm not aware of twelve of them, but I'm, I'm just curious what they were. And I also think that the board should put it out there and create a group and figure out what is the best use for that space. Because I don't think that housing is the best use for that space for the community, for the residents.
All right, question, I appreciate that, thank you, yes, for it.
Anne Burbine, tenth and eighth street. We are running around in a circle here. And is sixty-three or however many use of affordable housing at Gates viable? We don't know. Time will tell. This is two to five year project, regardless. It's not gonna be town hall, that was one of the studies. If we wanted to put town hall, forty-two and fifty-two million, and that was eight years ago. We're paying a hun- a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain that property. It reaches the point of absurdity. We have to make a decision, and the decision is made at town meeting to move forward. My concern is, I want to see more family housing. It's desperately needed, but this project doesn't do that, and that's fine. That's fine. It's a start, and we have to start somewhere. And I agree with Jamie, and I was involved on CVC, and I can count, you were there too, with the Grantham Group and Steve Coulter, who was with the Housing Authority. And he basically shepherded this whole thing through, and the people that live there love it. And there's a three hundred person waiting list to get into this project. And what does that tell you? That it works. Is anything that we do here perfect? No. Is everybody gonna be satisfied? Absolutely not. We have to come to the consensus, and we have to move forward. And you all have given the ability to move forward. So let's go with it.
And with that, yes, go out there.
And I would just like to say that the town certainly has experience in renovating and creating fields. And we know how to finance them, we know how to do it. It's been done, thirty-two and ten million dollars in debt of a high school athletic outlets. And over the years, in addition to what we spent on those football field and JV field and all softball field, we're now in the process of brand new tennis courts. I, there are people, someone on this board, in fact, really, really wanted the tennis courts, because we had a project at the time. But we had to make a decision at the time, that it would not pass town meeting if we tried to do too much all at once. So you take things one step at a time. Small successes, yeah. And it won't be the end of the world if there's a less than beautiful field out in the back of this new project. Um, it's not the end of the world, and you can do these things, you know, on a, on a timetable. So I, I just feel as though, if, if we don't start keep moving this along, we are gonna end up in a circle. And I just don't wanna see it going in the circle that we wanted up for like ten or fifteen years with the senior center around and around and around and around. Because people have their own objections. I don't want it here, I want it there, I don't like this part of it, this is gonna be a problem. You have to get to a point where, you know, the old saying, fish eat the bait. So I really feel as though we just need to keep moving. And if at some point in time, this doesn't work out financially, we'll, we'll know it when we get there. So we have to get there, we have to, we have to have a path.
And Mr. Goodrich, do you have?
Uh, no, Susanna Green. Yep.
Uh, Ms. Green, you should be able to unmute right now, just the name, address, and go ahead with your comment. Thank you so much.
Uh, sure, can you hear me? Susanna Green, three, three, seven, First Parish Road. Um, I have two completely different questions. The first one was related, I guess, to the affordable housing question. If there is a future need, I am curious to know if there is a plan in the future to expand on the town land that is behind Lawson Green.
I have this part. Yeah, um, well, that's two different questions. One, is, is always a need. But no, we have, there's no, no plans of now.
If I can add a little, a little history to that question? That property that everyone seems to, seems to have thought we could have put the senior center on had huge problems in terms of getting access to the site. It was gonna cost a lot of money just to be able to get access to that site. I don't know if by building Lawson Green somehow or other, we've managed to create access to that property. I don't know. But all I can say is, that is, it's like saying, well, let's go down to where the housing authority owns the property that butts the golf course down in the, across the street from the Widow's Wharf. Well, you know, you can ask Jim, he's gone looking for land in this town for us to be able to do certain things. And it, it's virtually impossible, and it's just, it's, it's very difficult. So, you know, the what ifs, the what ifs, the what ifs. And again, I, I just feel as though we need to take, keep taking the steps forward with the understanding that if somehow or other we hit a roadblock sometime, then that's it.
Yeah, and sometimes, and sometimes property goes for sale, I mean, there's, there's so many different factors. Was, was there a second question, or did you wanna go to the other person?
Yeah. Yeah, that, that was my first question, because if there's a concern for housing and there is town-owned land, I just didn't know if that is something, you know, that's coming down the pike later on, again. And if so, that would be more people and more traffic in the area. The second, just generally the second concern, again, I know this isn't developed and nothing's committed to as of yet. Just has to do with, you know, probably the zoning and the bylaws and building heights and things like that, where they're replicating a building, but essentially the building would probably be even higher than it is now if they're truly doing three stories of apartments. So I, depending on what the outcome is, I would hope that there would be a lot more mitigation measures in place for, you know, abutters, for screening noise and lights, there currently are.
I can tell you, this board takes very seriously, I mean, I mean, you talked, that was the first thing, one of the first things you said about making sure, and we want those abutters to be involved in this as well. It's only gonna make this whole process better. Because we don't wanna miss out, you know, light pollution or noise or landscaping. So yes, I think that was your earlier point.
And I, I mean, I'm speaking for the neighborhood, because many of the people here can't attend meetings. They have jobs that are, you know, they're sleeping now, they work at night, things like that. So I'm, I am, you know, speaking for a bigger group of people with concerns. I know it's usually just me showing up here, but I'm, I'm kind of the face of everybody over here. And, you know, so I just hope, yes, anything going forward, we can be included. We really were not included on the senior center. We had to fight to be heard, and I would hope for a better relationship on anything going in over here.
No, I, I'll, absolutely, we need you to, we need you to be involved. And I'll, and I'm gonna say this, and I think some of my board members, no, I'm gonna say this, but looking back at the, the water treatment plant, I thought that's, that's very dear to my heart. And there was a gentleman who was very against the water treatment plant. And I can only thank him, because he's made, he helped make that process better. He did. It, it really is, because we don't, there's not enough, there's no newspapers, we don't hear enough from folks. And I, I, I mean, that sincerely, that getting that feedback from the, from the neighbors everywhere around, it's the only way for these things to get better. Questions we don't think of. You, I never thought about the height of the bylaw until you just mentioned it. I'm, I'm not gonna lie and say that I think of every great question. So I, I, yeah, yeah, it's only, it's only for a little, but it's no, but ser-, yeah, but seriously, it's, those are the things that we do want.
We need to hold to that.
Yeah. Everybody needs to be involved.
And Mr. Goodrich, do you have another hand raise? Are you ready?
All right, this will be the last one, and then.
Yep, Ms. Kuhn, Ms. Kuhn, you should be able to unmute yourself, just go ahead with your comment. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you. Well, just three quick things. I would like the board to look at that property behind the library, behind Lawson Green, and see what's possible to put in affordable housing back there, and put in more like two hundred units. Something that would really make a dent in what's gonna be needed. And also, I would ask that, if you could please post those twelve proposals that have been reviewed for the property at the Gates property. Um, I'd like to see what was.
I think the number, the number twelve is nebulous.
I don't know how many studies.
Yeah, it's all, we will get those posted.
Those are available online right now.
Yeah, we'll make sure they're in any of those.
Put them in one place and make it easy. Yeah, I think that is a good idea.
I think that is a good idea to have a page for this project.
I don't know if it's 10 of them, 7 of them. Yeah, all the ones that we have.
All of them.
I'm sorry, Jennifer, what was the third and final?
The third one is, I'm looking at Article 14, and I have looked at it at town meeting, and their word affordable is nowhere mentioned in that article.
No, it says house. No, yeah, it's just housing.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. So it could be any kind of housing?
That's technically good, Dave. But our only, our only part of this proposal is for all of them. Because that's where they can, you know, the rights work together. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I would love, I think we'd love to motion if we can.
We don't have time.
You would be the motion director.
If you just want us to move forward, we'll be there at the town hall.
All right, so we, well, I'm looking at agreement, I guess we'll be good. All right. Next, thank you, we're on to budget calendar.
It's just, it's just crash today.
For our next year.
So because town meeting was so much fun, it's time to set our fiscal 27 budget calendar. So this is our draft calendar. Major subject to change, it always does change as things come up. Select board hasn't set their dates for their 2025, 2026 meetings yet. So there will all, there'll be a little bit of play in it, but let's just let everyone know where the goalposts are.
This is consistent. May I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is consistent with your methodology every year when you're establishing this calendar, correct? No surprises or any?
Nothing changed, I just updated the dates.
Thank you.
I have one.
Yes.
Question slash suggestion. I, and I don't know if the board agrees, I do not do well when the meetings go till like midnight. And I think a couple of them went, were very late when we do budgets. So I would prefer additional meetings versus meetings that go late, and we have people, we have town employees having to present at 10 o'clock. I just think it would be better. Because I would be in favor of when we get really deep into the budget, that we maybe do.
At least two.
Like, yeah.
Maybe two or three, and maybe.
Maybe like, not every other week, but every week or two. I think, I think if we did two extra meetings, we could create a schedule where we're not here, when we don't have people late.
Absolutely.
So I would prefer that. I think it's respectful for every, then sometimes we've got people waiting to present, and they've got to sit for the budget because they've got a line, food truck application or something. So I would prefer, I would prefer to do that, figure out how we can do that, and not have late.
What does that mean?
I think it's true every day.
I don't know.
I don't know what you need to do.
I'm all over here.
There were a couple meetings total this year.
That's why it's very bad.
Do I have to add to our next meeting?
Well, not the name of the day, sir. No, but I have the direction. Yeah.
The chair has seen my master schedule that you came up with at your retreat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's another 11 by 17 multicolor thing, where we scheduled out what was going to be on your agenda, figured out the minutes per thing, and then figured out how many hours. That's why you decided to add that meeting in March, figuring out you were going to have two six-hour meetings. So we could have, so I think that's where we can do that. Let's see how things are going to fall, and if you've got a lot of stuff going, like, or committee appointments or whatever, ship, or ask the board if they want to add a meeting at a certain time.
Or just do a specific budget meeting, you know, with those budgets. So people don't have to sit and wait for their event or anything or whatever.
You don't have to wait this way. But I'm just going to ask, the full committee, does some of its budget work on Saturdays? Do they not? Um, they may do some of their work on Saturdays, I thought there was, when they have meetings.
They do a public meeting. I think they do a public meeting on Saturday when people come, and they do a budget specifically. And I also think they do a budget specific.
I'm just saying, you know, I agree. A meeting that's not on Saturday, 11 o'clock in the morning, you're just...
Yeah, I guess I would, I would be.
I was only, sorry.
I'm not going to get in the board anymore. So why don't you guys have a Saturday meeting?
Have Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, let's go.
Motion?
Yes.
Chip does strike here. On to the meeting.
You can lead that one.
Move to approve the fiscal year 27 budget calendar, which is subject to change once the select board sets its meeting dates for calendar year 2026.
Mr. Gilmore, second in five, is Harrison on paper.
Aye.
unanimous.
And keeping with the joy. I haven't heard of new potential fall 2025 special town meeting dates. And the reason we're talking about this this early is because depending on where you want to go, we could have to open award in June. So one meeting away, and we would be talking about opening award. So I gave you the historical dates of town meeting, yeah, for 2015, and then three possible dates that I already reviewed with Kathy. And she's fine with all of them. My thought is it'd be safer for November 3rd, to have a little bit more time in the summer. And that's still early enough for the tax classification hearing. And anything else that pops up in the first quarter of the year, but that's completely up to you.
They cannot, September 29th, that's fine.
I'll just ask just that, what is it, I think, a sort of simple question. Is there anything that we know of that is going to demand this? And there's no deadlines that are, we've had a couple of situations where we've had real serious deadlines to comply with, and more big projects that we needed to get approved, or if you use the water treatment, like the site approach. I already have my list going for the annual 2026, and the special for the fall.
I can slip them on, why don't you?
We have unphased bills, reconciliation items in C P C, or a free item brought.
I mean, they, they ain't picking them micography, so, move along Seawall. And that's why we approved that bar, we found that violation, obviously. So if that happened, we're ready to go, and not have it happen coming in the house. Unless something happens, there's nothing right now that I see that says, you need to have it sometime, you need to have it.
It's got to be here, October 29th. I think September is way before.
Yes.
Way too early. Look, you're cramming everything in the summer.
We only have one September 1st, and there was a reason I can't follow it, wasn't we had it on the deadline?
All right.
Take a motion for November. Move the select board vote to schedule the fall 2025 special town meeting for Monday, November 3rd.
Morning 25. Mark Calendar, Mr. Gilmore, second in five, against Campfield, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We'll talk about fiscal 28, I think, never been actually, there's still no one else.
Thank you, Dave. Boards and committee, these are just reappointments. Our clerk will read, and well, first, does anyone have any concern to question about these reappointments?
No.
No.
Your, John, and your illustrious clerk.
Move to appoint following individuals for a term of three years or until a successor is named. Citizen rep to the fellowship committee, Judith Baron Ariel. South Shore Regional School Representative, John T. Mannett. Todd Sible, Todd Reardon.
Ms. Campfield, all right, both there, all in favor. Aye. Aye, unanimous. We're going to, Seth, we're going to disband your cable television committee.
That is the request, yes.
Right. Well, I tell us, well, there you go, just a question. You can tell us why.
I think it's a proposal, really, this, this, this committee was created, we, first of all, we haven't met in about six, seven years. It was really created, we met quite a bit when we were renegotiating our contract with Comcast slash Xfinity. It was, it was imperative at that time, and not only because of that, but because my predecessor had left before I came along. So this committee was very important to have together during that time. Ms. Brianna Trefiero, who's sitting in the back helping you, did manage things for me, so thank her very much. And yeah, no, I mean, we were able to secure the max amount that we wanted from Comcast, Xfinity, and we're kind of all set.
Well, makes sense to me.
Seven years, yes.
I personally think it's a very well-run operation, and I'm not buttering them up so I don't get good coverage.
Yeah.
It's just needed anymore. So thank you, Seth, for all the hard work, and it's a very professional run organization. And I don't know how you get around town as much as you do, but we do.
It's everywhere.
It's probably the only budget I do, so you sure you don't need more help, Seth? Sure you don't need more people like I'm here?
We have it under control, we have it under control.
Good doctor in the back, you got Seth, we got everything laid. It's the best. All right, I'll take a motion.
Move to disband the cable television committee effective immediately with gratitude for the great services, excellent work, time and dedication they've provided to the town of Citroen.
You're here.
Aye.
Mr. Gilmore, say, Liz Harrison, all in favor. Aye, unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Alka Pedlar. Mr. Asper.
Yeah, why was that?
President, Mr. Asper.
Because it wasn't mine, dude. He wasn't really on the course. Is that, that one changed?
Oh.
God.
It was after, this is it.
All right, Ms. Emily, yes.
Nothing, I'm just excited to get the truck out on the road again.
That's a new truck, too. Yeah, a new truck.
Oh.
So, very exciting.
Take a motion.
Move to renew the Hopper and Pedlar license for our local Miss Emily food truck 2025 season ending with October.
Second.
Aye, Ms. Campbell, say, Liz Harrison, all in favor. Aye, unanimous. Our drain layers, pen, um...
Excavate.
Excavate. I guess, pen excavate, drain layer renewal. Questions, concerns, comments? Worries?
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have a...
No, they're not.
If they're not in town, Jim?
Pen, no.
They're not living in town.
No, you're being renewed. It's renewal.
No, it says new, I think, but it is a respite. But this is the, better to the sort of files, so they beat all the requirements.
You know, I have to say personally that we routinely do approve these things, but it's very dangerous work. And so we like to think that we have the right people vetting them, and obviously we do, because...
And they keep an eye on them, too, if they're not doing it the right way, then we, or PPW, we don't want to license it.
Well, I know that in Boston, there were a couple of really bad accidents that turned up, but it was a very bad ocean record, so I just, I was worried about this particular type of business.
Well, they get very bad, yeah.
Move to approve a drain layer license to pen excavation.
Liz Harrison, second in five, Mr. Gilmore, all in favor. Aye. Aye. Unanimous. Please, on boards.
Um, I just, Jim, so cover most of mine, that for the chamber, there'll be a talk of the town, and Mr. Goodrich and Mr. Piquero will be participating. It's open to the public, it's meant to be hosted by the Chamber of Commerce at May 14th at 8 o'clock at the Maritime Center. To discuss actions of this board and the town's taking to the impact business. And there will be a candidates forum for those who aren't going to go this year on May 22nd, 6:30 at the Performing Arts Center, also sponsored by the Chamber with support and, and seeing.
I'm trying to write one.
Uh, 6:30 at the Performing Arts Center. And the E D C is, and it's launching development of marketing for the town of Citroen. And so we're lots more than about that, that much.
Love it.
No, certainly, who knows?
I wish I just village these ends, but yes, Jamie?
A couple, I did the, that the rotary meeting at the senior center on this past week, and reviewed the town meeting. Answered a lot of good questions, and I thought that was nice. And then Sunday, I read our petition for the Easter uprising by St. Mary's Parry. Karen did a beautiful poem there, and it was very, it was a very moving time.
It was like Joan's church.
It was, uh...
It's 100% gosh, though.
Yeah, definitely was very, very inspiring, and making progress, and sit with, and know that we have such a wonderful connection with the old side.
Wow.
Love it.
Well, it was very impressive, people in terms of presentations.
Oh, yeah. It was good.
Love it.
I don't, I don't do much. I know they're doing, uh, Ship Day is this coming weekend, and hopefully, right, we'll hold off.
Yeah.
They're doing, you know, more of a family dinner as well.
If you do Ship Day, you'll have to rent that.
You won't, right?
Yeah.
Well, we'll arrange that.
No, it's more in the morning.
Yeah, we'll arrange that. And, uh, yeah, we'll cover it.
Uh, some correspondence, I saw some.
I have some correspondence, I think you've been given most of all of this.
Yeah.
The, just to follow up on what the Gates produce, Historical Society sent us a letter saying they would like to be involved with this due to the locations of their two historic properties near and there.
In the front and the back.
Yeah. And then, um... We've got the ADU issue, I think you've seen a little literature on that, at Twenty-Ninth Avenue, some neighbors that are objected to the potential addition of the ADU. First of there, I'm sure the appropriate boards will handle that, and you should be aware of that. We have a waterway regulation notice of adding a bulkhead wall for Darkfield Street. You should be aware of that. Mass Housing Final Report Analysis. I'm not sure what to make of this, but basically advising us that we have not given them some information. But they're moving forward and issuing the letter anyways. Does anybody?
Seth Stock, we broke. I thought it was, I thought it was. I thought it said we're, I thought it was that we don't do graphics, everything was...
I think it was everything was done.
I thought it was everything was in alliance based on the reports and the financial reports.
Right, it's just interesting how some people write these kind of letters, I think. I don't have one of them.
It was definitely not that there's writing.
A notice from Xfinity about, um, how did you read some of their channels instead of my, here? And then, lastly, Chapter 91 license to reappear to folks down in Humor Rock post the notice of past, try to stand with Doc, 25 Central Avenue. I'm sure the appropriate boards will pick that up. Yeah, that's all I have for correspondence.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next, you're going to stop. We're meeting minutes before we go to motion to approve the meeting minutes as written and submitted.
And post, but then not post the executive session on that day.
Correct.
I think there's a mix.
They don't think that's it.
Yeah. Right.
Turn on monthly.
Good, tactically, but...
Move to accept this select board meeting is for April 8th, 2025. Further, we will accept but not release this select board executive session minutes for April 8th, 2025. And further, move to accept this select board minutes for April 14th.
So, Mr. Gilmore, I have Liz Harrison, all in favor. Aye. It is unanimous. I want to adjourn, and I don't have the...
It's in, did I have it?
It's in the back, it might be, too, but it's like, it's in earlier, that's why I didn't have something.
But we're going to go on the executive session.
Yeah.
Liz Harrison, unanimous.
It's in the middle, that's why I thought I didn't have the other thing.
This is way too sleepy. Um... Yeah. So the chair declares that the select board move into executive session pursuant to purpose 3, the open meeting law is a strategy with respect to litigation. And I declared their open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, excuse me, on the negotiating position of the select board in connection with this matter, shellfish, capital culture. And move that the select board move into executive session pursuant to purpose 3, the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, shellfish, capital culture, and then open meeting to have a detrimental effect on negotiation, let's speak, division in position of the select board in connection with this matter. The board will not reconvene and open session. This will require a roll call, vote.
Seth.
Seth.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Harris, Ms. Durovic.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
And Connie.
Yes.
Thank you, none of them, all in favor.